I would like to call the September 10, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. If you are able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll be taking a 10-minute break. Back to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Fikes?
Here.
Commissioner Woodard?
Here.
Chair Twade is absent. Commissioner Reveal?
Here.
Commissioner Petty is absent. Vice Chair Ursley?
Present.
And Commissioner Kraus is absent. You have a quorum.
Is there a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda items into record?
Thank you. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of July 23, 2025, and that is your Consent Agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the Consent Agenda items just read by the clerk? No remote attendees wishing to speak. Are there any other revisions to the agenda? Are there any objections or approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Hearing no objections, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved. We have no scheduled public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak to anything that is not on the agenda? Yeah, we're going to handle that on Agenda Item Number F when we review the resolution. Is there any remote attendings wishing to speak?
There are no hands raised.
We have no consideration of Platts. Moving on to F1, Resolution PZ 2025-28, granting a conditional use permit to temporarily allow an accessory building on parcel without main building or use on the parcel described as Lot 6, Block 5, Momson Subdivision, Replat Edition Number 1, located at 1012 Third Street within the suburban residential zoning district. Is there a motion to approve Resolution PZ 2025-28? Commissioner Woodard?
I move to approve Resolution PZ 2025-28, granting a conditional use permit.
Commissioner Reveal?
I second.
Director Butner, may we have the staff report?
Thank you, Vice Chair Ursley. The applicant is requesting to temporarily place a storage container at 1012 Third Street located north of Reedout Avenue along Third Street. A conditional use permit is required to place an accessory building on a parcel without a main building or use in the suburban residential zoning district. Pursuant to KMC 14.20.150A, the intent of a conditional use permit is to allow some uses that may be compatible with the designated principal uses in specific zoning districts, provided certain conditions are met. Prior to granting a conditional use permit, the commission shall determine that the identified criteria as outlined in KMC 14.20.150E, Conditional Use Permits Review Criteria, are met. Criteria 1: The use is consistent with the purpose of this chapter and the purposes of the intent of the zoning district. Findings: The suburban residential zone is intended to provide for medium-density residential development in areas which will be provided with common utility systems. The owner of the property is planning to build a new residential structure on the above-named parcel. Prior to the development, the owner-applicant has requested the temporary use of a shipping attainder, colloquially called a Conex, to securely store building materials and/or tools during the construction phase while not in active use. Due to logistical issues, it is not always practical for the owner-applicant to be onsite to oversee the security of procured materials and tools. A conditional use of an accessory building on a parcel without a main building or use is allowable per KMC 14.22 Land Use Table and 14.20.200 Accessory Structures. Specifically, KMC 14.20.200B states, "An unoccupied accessory structure may be allowed as a conditional use on a residential parcel that does not have a main building or use of the land only when the parcel on which the unoccupied accessory structure proposed is adjacent to and shares a common lotline with a parcel owned by the same owner and a main building or use is constructed or used on the adjacent parcel. The conditional use for an unoccupied accessory structure on an adjacent parcel shall expire upon transfer of either parcel to a third party, and all accessory buildings on adjacent parcels without a main building or main use must be removed." The owner does own all three adjacent parcels. Once the building is constructed, the shipping attainder, if kept on the property, would be required to conform to the applicable provisions of KMC 14.20.200A Yard Requirements for Accessory Structures. Staff finds that the temporary conditional use would allow for meaningful residential development in the area. Criteria 2: The economic and non-economic value of the adjoining property and neighborhood will not be significantly impaired. The adjoining property is owned by the owner-applicant. Other landowners and residents nearby have been properly noticed. Mr. and Mrs. Minarik, nearby landowners did contact the Planning Department on September 2, 2025 for clarification. Once informed, they spoke in favor of the project. The conditional use is temporary in nature and will be conditional on the acquisition of a building permit from the City of Kenai and successful development in accordance with that permit. There is an existing berm of dirt that will partially shield this container from view. Staff finds that the proposed use would not impair the economic and non-economic value of the adjacent properties and neighborhood. Criteria 3: The proposed use is in harmony with the Comprehensive Plan. Findings: The land use plan from the 2016 Comprehensive Plan identifies the subject property within the suburban residential land use classification. The suburban residential land use classification is defined in the Comprehensive Plan as intending for single-family and multifamily residential uses that are urban or suburban in character. The area will typically be developed at a higher density, lots are typically smaller, and public water and sewer services are required or planned. Some developments may be required to construct streets to a paved standard, and larger subdivisions may be required to provide sidewalks in public areas. Parks and open space land uses may be considered appropriate. The surrounding uses consist of empty lots to the north, empty lots to the east, empty lots to the south, an empty lot, and a single-family residence to the west. The area is zoned as suburban residential surrounding this parcel. The proposed conditional use is temporary but will result in new residential dwelling being constructed in an area that is beginning to see more demand and is already served with said utilities. The proposed use of the property is as proposed is consistent in harmony with several goals of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan. Goal number 1: Quality of Life to promote and encourage quality life in Kenai. Objective Q1: Ensure that Kenai is a community where people and property are safe. Objective Q4: Establish siting and design standards so the development is in harmony and scale with surrounding uses. Goal 3: Land use is to develop land use strategies to implement a forward-looking approach to community growth and development. Objective O U2: Promote the infill of existing improved subdivision lots. Criteria 4: Public services and facilities are adequate to serve the proposed use. Findings: City water is available and adequate for the proposed use. Prior to the development of the dwelling, a replat would be needed to merge lots together to allow for a septic system, or a sewer line would need to be extended along Third Street. These considerations have been discussed with the owner-applicant. Consideration of this conditional use permit will drive further development decisions by the owner-applicant. Third Street is a gravel road that is not currently city-maintained. Criteria 5: The proposed use will not be harmful to public safety, health, or welfare. Findings: The storage container will be securely locked when not in use and positioned away from any right-of-way. Staff finds that there will be no impact to the public safety, health, or welfare. Criteria 6: Any and all specific conditions deemed necessary by the commission to fulfill the above-mentioned conditions. These may include, but are not limited to, measures relative to access, screening, site development, building design, operation of the use, or other similar aspects related to the proposed use. And staff finds that allowing a temporary accessory structure without a main building does not currently cause any adverse impacts on the surrounding properties. Pursuant to Kenai Municipal Code 14.20.280C, notices of the public hearing for the conditional use were mailed to property owners within a 300-foot periphery of the subject property. City staff published notice of the public hearing in the Peninsula Clarion. City staff submitted an affidavit opposing verifying a sign was placed on the parcel with information on the public hearing for the conditional use permit request. One public comment was received on September 2, 2025, as mentioned in Finding 2. No other comments were received at the time of this report. Staff finds that the proposed conditional use to place an accessory building on a parcel without a main building or use at 1012 Third Street on a property described as Momson Subdivision, Replat Edition Number 1 and 2, Lot 6, Block 5, meets the criteria for issuance of conditional use permit as set forth in subsections E1 through E6 of Kenai Municipal Code 14.20.150, and hereby recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission adopt PZ 2025-28, approving conditional use permit subject to the following conditions: 1. Any development or use of the property shall comply with all applicable federal, state of Alaska, and city regulations, regardless of whether or not the requirements are listed as conditions for the approval of the conditional use permit. 2. The conditional use is allowed effective the date of a building permit being obtained from the City of Kenai Building Official/Public Works Department. 3. The conditional use expires 30 days from the certificate of occupancy being issued for the proposed structure. And 4. Upon request, the applicant or applicants represented shall meet with city staff for non-site inspection. That is my report.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to Resolution PZ 2025-28? Thank you.
Hi there, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Darren Marion. I live on Third Street. Been there 27 years. The property across from us that this is being put on, I know the gentleman that owns the property that's putting the Conex there. He's a fine person. I don't know, have any of you guys been on Third Street recently? I put that road in. I put it in because the city would never help me. I put the dirt in the last 20 years. I plow it. I maintain it. I've asked for a lot of help. We're at the point now, we take care of the road. We never got any help this whole time. When I was told about this a week ago, they told us it was a storage facility at the end of the road. I just found out yesterday. It's the gentleman across. That's the nicest guy in the world. So I'm here and support it. But I also would like some help on our road every once in a while. We don't ask for any help on the road maintaining it, but every year in the winter, I'm blocked with a berm because the city won't quit burying me at the end. I raised all my children there. I've called. I'm hoping maybe somebody will help us out. I've got nothing else to bother you guys with. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there anyone remote that wishes to speak?
Thank you, Vice Chair Ursley. I see that the applicant is online, however, has not raised their hand. Would you like me to unmute and see if they would like to add any comments? Oh, hand is raised. Mr. Hydman, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you very well. Are there any questions you might have?
Commissioner Fikes?
Through the chair, I have a question for you, sir. Your intention to place the Conex on your property, is that going to impact any of your utilities in the area? Any of your electrical, your phones?
No, there are no electrical on that property at this time. I suspect it's going to come up probably within a couple of years because they're building all around that area, and MATA will have to run a line down there to get electricity to those lots.
Just raw land, then? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Woodard?
Seems pretty clear-cut to me, and I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Fikes?
Yes, having read through the packet and heard the testimony from the director's comments and staff, I too will be in agreement with the understanding that the intent is short-term and not long-term, and the intent is for development, as we've stressed in the conditional use permit. So it seems to fall in line with a good direction. So for those reasons, I'll be in favor of it.
Can we get a call for the vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Woodard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reveal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ursley?
Yes.
Commissioner Fikes?
Yes.
You have four yes votes, three absent. Resolution PZ 2025-28 is approved.
We have no unfinished business. Moving on to Item H, new business. Discussion around P&amp;Z's meeting schedule for FY 2026.
Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, just going through, looking at what we've done this year so far, looking at kind of where our workload is internally in terms of number of items of business coming through, pretty much all summer, we've canceled every other meeting. So I just wanted to open discussion what the commission would think. We wouldn't be taking action, but just to start the discussion, we can continue discussion at a later date since some of our members are missing, but potentially looking at going down to one meeting a month, which would either be the second or fourth Wednesday, to stay on that schedule. We would reserve the right to call a special meeting should we have business that is very timely that we need to move along, but it would respect your time, as commission members, and would allow us to make our meetings more robust, have more business items per meeting. The only legislation that has a cap of time is our consideration of Platts, and those are 49 days. So if we had one meeting a month, we'd be able to make that. All other business is really at the discretion of the commission, so there really is no driving timeframe. That said, like I said, we do reserve the right to call special meetings should we need one, and it's properly advertised, but just knowing that everyone's busy these days, we didn't know what the commission felt, so I just wanted to bring it up. This would take effect January with the new commission, when we said the new commission. So that way, it's a very solid date. And this would be to recommend to council to amend the policy, because right now, the policy states that we have two meetings. So ultimately, it is council's decision, but if we had a recommendation, I believe they'd listen to it and determine what's in the best interest of the city, but I just wanted to open up to the members on your thoughts.
Commissioner Fikes?
Through the chair, thank you. I'm in support of it with the understanding that it would be for efficiency and streamlining and a reduction in costs for staff and overhead. That would make sense to me from a business standpoint, but from a public standpoint, I would absolutely hope that the perception would be communicated that it's not a loss in the voice or an opportunity for the public to come and have some input on something that may or may not be on the agenda. So if there was some way to communicate that or stress that, then I would absolutely be okay with that. I know it's come up in the past, and it seems like it's a better way to have a sit-down when you've got several items on the agenda as opposed to just one or one and a half, maybe. So, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Reveal?
Everything Ms. Fikes said, and is there a way, obviously, we can't predict how many will be at the one, how many resolutions or Platts will have at a specific meeting, but if we go over five or we go over four, can we go ahead and have the second meeting and move some of those to the second meeting as opposed to being in here until 9 or 10 o'clock at night, depending on the Platts?
Guess it's an open discussion, so I can reply. Depending on what we ultimately make our recommendation, as long as we outline exactly how we would trigger that and we could outline it in a policy, I think it could be doable. Again, this is if council were to adopt a recommendation, but I think that if we come up with some language and I can come back at our next meeting and have some, at least some draft, and if we can wordsmith it a little bit to make it meet the intent.
I appreciate your feedback, and that would be my suggestion.
One question that I would have: Are there months that Platts and CUPs are heavier historically?
The winter seems to be a little heavier on Platts as people get ready for the spring. Generally, they've been pretty speedy since we're not holding the formal public hearing at our level. The public hearing is actually at the borough level for the Platts, but we've also had some years where it's kind of leveled out, you know? So it really, earlier this year, we had quite a few CUPs coming through, and then all of a sudden, they just kind of stopped. So it's really boom or bust. It depends on the development cycle here in the city, if there's new businesses moving in or new entrepreneurs, but Platts are fairly steady a couple of months on average.
Mr. Woodard?
I guess I better say something. So I just kind of ditto everybody. I'm fine with whenever it happens, as long as I get notice.
And I just, through the chair again, would hope that we had have an opportunity for those that aren't present would still have the opportunity for input before it's presented to council, possibly for any suggestions that they may have.
Absolutely. I would bring this back and forth, or back and front of all the remaining commissioners, and then we would still have to, like I said, wordsmith and make our policy exactly what we want to recommend. So we have another few weeks or so to get this if we want to start in January, but really, there's no hard deadline. It's just when we feel we're ready, we can take it in front of council.
Moving on to H2, Discussion on the Capital Improvement Plan for FY 2027 through 2031.
So I was instructed by the city clerk to bring this up. Sorry, I had to. She's sitting over there. But normally, this time of year, a lot of the commissions, especially ones that have typically larger projects and ask for more significant sums of money in their budget for some of their projects, this is the time of year where we start putting those lists together because we generally finish the Capital Improvement Plan later in the calendar year, and then in January, we jump right into budget for the next fiscal year because it takes a while for council to put that together on staff recommendations. The reason I'm bringing it to you is we normally don't ask for money in the Capital Improvement Plan, but we may wish to consider asking for some money. And again, I would have to get some costs and bring it back to you, but we're considering kicking off a rewrite of the Comprehensive Plan because 2016 is the other ones. It's been, by next year, it'll be 10 years old. Kenai has continued to develop in those 10 years, and it may be time to revisit, maybe not change everything, but revisit what we do have and make sure not change everything, but revisit what we do have and make sure we're still on the same track where we want to go as a community. So we would be asking, again, I don't have a firm number, it could be up to about $250,000 or more, to hire a consultant to lead the comprehensive planning process, could be more than that, I don't know what the, the going rates are currently, but with the airport master plan underway and their Phase 2's kicked off, the Parks and Rec master plan should be done in the spring, late, late winter, early spring, building on those efforts, it's kind of time to put the capstone on and really cement where we want to go going forward. And that really helps us as a community go after different grants, helps set the goals for, for council and the, and all, basically all our departments, so it kind of gives us all our marching orders, what to go for. So just wanted to see if, if the commission was amenable to potentially asking for some money. It wouldn't come through the commission, it would go through the planning zone department, but if you would be in support of us kicking off, it'd be no earlier than July 1st with the new budget, a new comprehensive plan to start outlining our path forward.
I would be in favor of that. I think, like you say, moving forward from being present during the last comp plan, I know that there's been some pretty significant development on the waterfront. There's been the resolution, it seems, with the bluff erosion stabilization. There's been some new industries that have come to town, so, yeah, I think it would be reasonable to try and ask for some funds to see if we could utilize some of the stuff that we have. I think last time, from what I remember, it seemed like we were pretty much starting from scratch and going through the land use table and trying to decipher intents and whatnot. I don't think it would be that stressful this time, I don't think. It seemed like that time, we were literally rewriting it from the 1940s and 50s moving forward. And so I think, hopefully, possibly, it might be a little more streamlined and maybe it wouldn't be as cost inhibitive. So, yeah, I think it'd be a great thing, a great tool. I think see some more development with the airport and impact studies on that, so I'd be supportive.
I think it's a great idea, and with the amount of growth potential that we have between now and 2031, I think it's a great idea to get our ducks in a row now.
Just curious question on that. I know some of the topics that came up on the last one were hazard mitigation, and I know that there's been some changes with FEMA, so going forward, that would be a really good topic, as some folks are with our current development in some of these areas that don't have the infrastructure in there. What would that look like for the residential zoning and that? So that would, that would be a good point of interest to pitch the IDV.
Moving on to reports, Director Butner, may we have your report, please?
Sure, I'll keep this short and sweet. Thanks for the grace you've given us as our department's gone over a little turnover over the summer and our, our, one of our administrative assistants is now helping with it, with the airport, so again, it's a little, little, I'm not going to say turnover, but a little turmoil. But we're, I think the keel's there, we want to stabilize and be moving forward, but if you guys have any, anything you want to see changed in packets, any information provided, feel free to reach out to us. We want to make it easy for you guys to do what you guys do versus, we want to provide all the information we can, essentially.
I want to thank you guys for all your patience and the staff for all their hard work and dedication to help our positions be successful. Commissioner Fikes, may we have your report, please?
Yes, the Borough met again on Monday. We didn't have a whole lot before us. The first item we had was postponed, and then the second two items were both approved. One of those was a conditional use permit resolution to construct a pedestrian pathway requiring fill within a 50-foot habitat protection district, and that was over on the Bridge Access Road. And then there was one for an ordinance amending KPB to address adoptions and deletions of inadversous waters within the West District, and that one was approved. And I'm pausing because there was one on there for Kenai that talked about the golf course, and that was to approve a bridge from 24 feet down to 12 feet, I believe, steel, light penetrating, and that was to remove what was there and put in a smaller footprint and replace with non-invasive vegetative to help with the transportation of the equipment back and forth to one of the structures. I think was the reasoning, and that was approved. Yeah, that was all we had before us.
Councilmember Sonar, may we have your report, please?
Thank you. At our last city council meeting, we had ordinance number 3482 dash 2025 in front of us, and you'll remember, you guys discussed this at your last P&amp;Z meeting. It was concerning the 13 properties that had multiple zoning criteria and issues, and your recommendation was to pass this ordinance so that it would eliminate the multiple zones on these 13 properties, and thereafter, each one of the 13 would have a single zoning. Does that ring bells?
Yeah.
Okay, so we passed that, and we took your recommendation. So that is my report.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment? So the next meeting scheduled for October 8th, we will cancel the meeting and do a work session. Is there anyone planning to be absent or attending remotely? Commissioner Woodard?
No, I'll be here. However, is it going to still start at 7:00 or are they earlier?
It depends, we can start earlier, we could start at 7:00, depends on what the commission wants. Work sessions are a little more.
They can, Diane can never show up if, if it's early.
I can be here at 6:15, that is the best I can squeak out on a Wednesday is our busiest, busiest day, so my apologies for tardiness today, but we were scrambling with late planes, so.
So maybe 6:30, just get a little extra wiggle room?
Six, 6:30, I'm solid, but 6:15 is a squeak.
And just to make note, there's a possibility that I would be absent for this work session. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Reveal?
I just want to tell everybody that I appreciate their attendance and paying attention to the details. I learn a lot from your, from your questions, and I know I'm still in the learning process, but I'm really liking this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodard?
I'm still learning too, but I want to congratulate Commissioner Reveal. She got married this last week.
I just had a question for staff or the director. We used to get a report, and maybe I saw it and just forgot, on complaints and problem CUPs. Are we still doing that, or did that go to the wayside?
We do still document, and I will get a more formalized report in a more orderly fashion. We've been cleaning up a lot of code enforcement, and some of those, most of those don't deal with CUPs, but our focus has been on the code enforcement side recently, so unfortunately, CUPs have kind of, if no one's complaining, we're kind of letting those be on the back burner, but we're going to be bringing them back to the front burner.
And on that same topic, then, are we able to address the properties or the complaints, the trash, the illegal structures, the uninhabitable structures, the problem areas?
Yes, so the, within the administration, so I work with city attorney, city manager, my staff, public works, that, people that all might have an interest in, in some of these code enforcement issues, and we actually have a new set, I guess, guideline. So soon as we get it, there's a process that follows. If they want to become compliant, we can work with them, and that kind of takes it off one track. If they are not compliant, that goes down to separate track. And it does get progressive with noticing and then potential. There are options in code to levy fines should the city attorney go that far. Again, we're not trying to be punitive, we're trying to get people back into compliance, but we have several tools at our disposal, but now we have a more formal structure on how to do that. It is, our code enforcement is complaint-driven, so the city's not out driving through saying, this might be an issue, this might be an issue, but as people complain about things, broken down cars or such, those are investigated each and every case.
Yeah, I understand the obvious with the ISORS, that makes sense. I guess my more concern would be with health and safety, so I mean, we do generally have some abandoned structures and children that go around and play in the areas and whatnot, or the attraction for, you know, the undesirables to hang and linger, and all of a sudden, you have another problem, another crime problem. So that was kind of, I was looking at, I know, like I say, there's several of these properties around, and they're still there, so that's why I was like, what's our mechanism to tackle that, I guess?
I would encourage anyone, and it can be done anonymously, that's a word, we have a form online, so you don't have to provide your name to, to, to submit these comments, or you can call our office, you can stop by our office, but each and every complaint gets reviewed and gets added to our queue to, to go and, and research, and we bring in the applicable departments should, should there be public self-safety and welfare, we may bring in KPD, or if it, let's say it's a burned-out structure, working with the fire department, see what, what issues are there as well. So we take every complaint seriously. We just encourage anyone who's around town to, if you see something, say something. I know it's kind of an overused saying, but definitely, if you do see something, because Kenai is a decently sized city in terms of land area, and we can't be everywhere.
I have a whole page.
I, I expect my email to be very full.
Can I go back? She just made me think of something with abandoned buildings, the Swanson Plaza, did that resell from the marijuana people? Has it sold to somebody else now?
I can verify, I do not know the actual status on the ownership, but that would be a quick, quick thing, and I can get back to you on that one.
Kind of along this topic, but I noticed during the summer, as you're approaching the airport, on the right-hand side, you have U-Haul, and then just beyond that, you come into a, a street, and then you have HEA. There's a vacant lot there, I think now it's up for sale, there's Fred Brown sign there. I was just curious with the zoning, and because we just brought this topic up for rezoning, I noticed that during the summer months, there would be a trailer there, then there'd be a for-sale vehicle there, and then there'd be another for-sale vehicle, and then a truck would be there. There'd be people coming back for us, so I'm just curious, what would that in the commercial district is what it would look like, but yet you were seeing camping taking place, you were seeing a car dealership taking place, so how would you know what the zoning that would have been?
If it's a lot, I'm thinking worth talking about, I believe that is general commercial on that side of the road, but I can double-check that one as well. Most uses, if it does require CP, we're going after them. If it's not allowable in that zone, I do believe sales would be allowed in a, in a commercial, but I'll definitely give you a firm answer on that one. I don't want to speak out of turn if I'm talking about the wrong parcel.
Yeah, I think it's up for sale, so it's kind of a mute point, but I was just curious. It was right between Quick, Quick Lane, so you got the oil change guy, and then immediately next to it, and I think he might even still been the same owner. I, I was just curious, I mean, we went two summers in a row, and then all of a sudden, everything would be packed up and gone after dip netting season. None of the vehicles ever seem to sell, they always seem to have the same, same sign, so I'm just like, okay, what, what's the story here?
We have no pending items, seeing no further business before this body. We are adjourned at 19:44.